It's primary meeting to order.
Patrick.
I don't have any of these things. I can call to order and there's none.
You could be the president of Procheck.
Why not?
You were in the center of things for a while.
Let's see.
And who would it fall to, who, the longest-serving member, right? After Mike? And then that would be you.
Yeah.
Say all right. One of us.
Oh, yeah, you've been on it all 50 years or something. But you were on and on Rob for a long time. You were God for many years. The first few years I was on.
Yeah, because COVID and things, and then I would call in.
But, yeah. Mystery.
So it's a minute and five, so if we want to be really efficient.
This is everybody, isn't it?
So we were announced at 5 o'clock. I think it's a couple of seconds, too, so let's call the meeting to order. And our tasks are listed on the agenda. The primary one, since I don't know, is there are other things besides organizational issues.
That was the big one, right?
That's the reason why.
That's the only reason we have the meeting. There's nearly no other old and new business here.
Because we have, we have something for...
April 1st. That's that. The Terogynous Landscape, actually.
Yeah.
What are they doing?
You didn't pick up the packet yet. Okay.
That's the April meeting.
That's the April 1st meeting.
It's April 1st. We're meeting for sure. It's slightly over the line.
Oh, you?
Side yard. I mean, they're way out to nowhere.
Those are the road people, right? Those are the road people from two years back.
Force 278 Route 108.
Just across the road, rear door road, they wanted to close on St. Lea.
Yeah.
What? Is that Fletcher's?
So we've had, I think, two people express interest in being chair. You two. Anyone else? And several. Goodness.
Everybody throw their hat in the ring and thrust, thrust. No.
So we need a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary, which we didn't have before, because Elaine did it.
Elaine did it for a while.
But she wasn't a member of the...
Yeah.
Can we get Elaine by default if you're the chair? She'll come to meetings.
Keep me in line.
I have a question. We have six people here. What if it's a tie?
Yeah, that is a bit of a problem. And another thing, a new business piece like you, you want to...
I invited somebody that I talked to and said he was going to come, but I guess he changed his mind.
I was looking Paul Kamalski, not really a good choice.
He's good.
You think?
Fine person is Craig Obriski. He's a... He's a... He's come to the meetings a lot, tall guy. He like... He's talked about, I've tried to, real man, he's seen me.
I think we had up to nine.
It's not going to be an odd number, isn't it?
It should be an odd number.
Yeah. Because you got to figure in for absences and things like that, too. But seven should be a good round. Not round, but a good number, too.
Well, which quarrel is four. So four people show up, we're in business. Okay, so does anyone have a suggestion about how we might go about this? Would you two like to explain why you want to do this? That would be helpful.
I think we could start your rest and have them explain. Okay. Well, I've been doing this for a while. I help do all the ordinances. Michael was kind of coaching me behind the scenes, something. He would always send the notes to me ahead of time, talk about ordinance as I come down. Here, we discussed the meetings a bit about, you know, where does this fit, where does that fit, you know? And help him do the letters that would go out to people. And approve them. And then they go out to everybody, just because fanatic, with spell check and grammar and things like that. End rules. You all know, I've been working for 40 years in FDA-regulated industries, so part of my job is to adhere to rules and regulations. Never show you strength unless there's a gray area. Leadership-wise, I've managed departments of up to 500 people, built multiple manufacturing facilities, sat on multiple civic associations, captain of my USDA team. Organization, leadership has been kind of my DNA forever and a day. And I was kind of humbled that makes it be perfect for them. That's where, you know, and I know these... I will say it's going to take a group effort for the first few months, though, whoever does this, because it's, we're all going to be... We were dependent on Michael so much because he was an encyclopedia of this stuff. He didn't even have to look at the black and white of it. He knew the history of every single application. It was crazy. So, but that's where...
I have a question. It's not necessarily about you, but in looking around at the resources we have, Jim Allen, I know he has lots of things to do, he is the zoning administrator, but I've never seen him at a meeting here. And it seems like he should be able to provide input to some of the case studies that we... not case studies, some of the applicants, because he's reviewed them. But as far as I've seen in my, I don't know, two years here, he's had no...
You kind of align between those two. You've got the Planning and Zoning Committee. Once he does his part over there, then we take it and we review it against the regulations. So it's kind of like a checks and balances with him, from what I understand. So he really, I don't know if he's not, is he not able to participate in these? I've never seen him in 15 years.
Jim is not going to come to a meeting if he don't have to. I mean, you could corner him if you want. I mean, if you can get ahold of him, he'll definitely talk to you, but...
I'm just curious on the relationship.
It's... I don't know how much Mike talked to me, though, to tell you.
Yeah, I don't know. Mike seemed to do everything.
It's a different job here. And he's not...
But doesn't he review the applicants?
Yes.
He does. He goes...
I'm just saying, it seems to, forget about personalities or anything like that. It seems to me if you have a guy who's reviewed it and has made recommendations, that those recommendations should come to us either written, in person, email. I'm just sort of theorizing.
Like we do, because we get a stat that he says we need to...
Right. He's out and, you know, something doesn't need, build a permit for, you know, X structure. If it doesn't need any variances or any conditional use, see what goes out. Looks if it's cool, he approves it, the thing goes on the wall. So that's his... He's just referring to everything else that needs review.
He's the zoning administrator. So, and which is, I'm glad somebody brought this up, because I was looking for this package. He hasn't signed this yet. And we need this signed. That should have been signed before he came to us. So, which is fine, but that's what he, on that page, he's, that's his job before he comes to us, to do that.
I mean, there's been friction in the past, I know, between Mike and him, and if you can talk about it, but I would not. I'll voice my opinion now. I'm not, I would never vote to replace Jim, because that would be like the death knell of the whole thing. Without him, the whole thing fall apart.
Right, right. I'm just, it was just a matter of...
Knowledge-based.
Using resources, that's all.
Yeah, he does one part, we do the rest. He's like the first.
First step.
First.
I mean, if you just said losing Mike is definitely a... Oh, yeah. It's definitely not a good thing in terms of what, where, where we stand now, because yeah, I mean, we did rely on him a lot. There's a lot of work. A lot of the heavy lifting, all the paperwork, all the decision writing, everything.
But he wrote all that stuff up after our meetings.
Yes. In the last few meetings, he, like I said, I would take notes, then he would take them, and we'd merge the two. So we had absence of the secretary, that's what was kind of happening behind the scenes. And then you all would see them and make comments to it and stuff.
Okay, so leaving the question about Jim aside, because it's not really relevant to what we're talking about.
I'm sorry for bringing it up at this point.
Does anybody have any questions, Rick? Other than that?
Are you prepared to, as I said in my email, and I replied to the chain at some point, are you prepared to take on the workload?
It's doable. It's a lot of it's clerical stuff, you know, which is not, it's paperwork.
Right.
You know, and then this, this is the meat of it. Then it's all the behind stuff, which my, I'm, I had equality. My life's paperwork.
I'm saying, I'm just asking bluntly, are you prepared to take it on?
Yeah, and if it gets too, you know, onerous for anybody who does this role, like I said, it's going to have to be a group effort for a while, because we're going to have to try to reabsorb everything Mike had, which is, you know, it's here, not him.
Sure, yeah. Well, how do you do that? Not you, I'm saying, how do, I don't know how you replace it. I don't have that knowledge. I mean, I've been on the work for years, but I still, you know, I don't have the depth and breadth of...
You, you...
No, all that happened in 1995. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, but I, he did a lot, you know, but the role, I think, of the chair of this is not only to organize it, but to kind of corral and keep people on point and run the meetings. I think what's going to have to happen in the future is some of the stuff that he's doing has to get disseminated out a little bit.
You mean delegated?
Yeah.
So before we go further, maybe Bruce could...
Yeah. I've been associated with this, I don't know how many years, but I've been at the root of it, both with Michael and certainly with Elaine, who has always put everything together. My strengths are in running organizations, running meetings, dealing with the public in an effective and polite way, getting the results that are warranted, and just keeping things on point and running smoothly. I've done that in a number of different organizations in Connecticut, having to do with the tree industry, Connecticut Tree Protective Association. I was president of that for three years in the 90s, and then I chaired the Education Committee and put together an 11-week course for people wanting to get their Connecticut Arborist license. I recruited scientists from the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station, arbers from various companies to run different classes, and we had a very high success rate with people actually testing and getting their license, which is a very difficult test in Connecticut. When I stepped down from being president, when I stepped down from running the Education Committee, I got appointed by the governor to be the chair of the Connecticut Tree Licensing Bureau, and did that for a few years. Then I got appointed by the town of New Canaan to be the tree warden, which in Connecticut is, is kind of a big deal. I revamped how that whole program was run, thereby saving the town thousands of dollars and getting things done extremely effectively by recruiting seven different tree companies in a, in a tight area to bid on all the jobs. So in doing that, in saving the town money, in getting things done in a timely manner, and dealing with the general public about all kinds of tree issues, which, as you might know, even in Vermont, but in Connecticut, it is a very, very emotional subject. And being able to deal with the tree huggers and the people that would cut everything down and listening to them and getting things done the correct way, I was able to do that. And here, since I've been in Vermont, I've resisted being in the center of things. I've had enough of that in my past, but I've found that becoming a justice of the peace and then being on a couple of different boards relating to that, I find myself getting right back into the swing of things and enjoying dealing with the public and answering their problems in an effective way. So I think if I were chair of this board, you would probably find things starting to smooth out, run quite professionally, and without stepping on anybody's toes, without hurting any feelings, but taking care of business. That's how I see it.
Thank you. And so Rick mentioned having to have more people involved in getting people's functioning. How do you see that?
Are you asking Mike?
Yeah, I'm asking.
We don't need anybody but who is on this board. All we have to do is pay attention to the details and make it happen. As far as asking Jim Allen to attend meetings, I know I talked with Mike about that in the past. He didn't see a need, Jim doesn't see a need, I don't see a need for that. Jim has his function and he does it well, and he passes it to us when things need further approval and scrutiny. And that's our job. We do that. We don't need, we don't need a bigger committee, we don't need a lot of input. All we need to do is stay focused. We have the regulations, we see how they fit to the regulations, and make the decision.
Okay, I think what you were talking about was us.
Not anybody else, no. And I agree with Bruce about Jim. I don't, well, it's two different things.
We are automatically, by sitting at this table, involved. Now, if any one person didn't feel like they were contributing as much as they should, then it's up to them to make the decision, should they get more involved, or should they step down in favor of somebody else, some new blood, you know? But as far as us as a group, everything that's decided is decided amongst us. The chairman has no greater say than anybody else in a decision. The job of the chairman is to keep the meeting moving smoothly, keeping us on point and focused. I can do that.
Anybody else have any questions?
Paperwork, all that stuff?
No problem at all.
Yeah, the good thing about, since I've been on this, is I can't think of one instance where we've had any dissension, which is kind of nice. We've had people come and go, at least in the meetings and non-megs, but...
When you ask about paperwork, what's involved really is, once we have made our decision, a decision letter needs to be penned. I'm good at that sort of thing. And I have help.
In-house.
Okay. But seriously, I, I don't, I don't see any problems whatsoever.
We can also, just to suggest a suggestion, throw in softball, pitch higher, but we can also maybe consider a hybrid model. We have to appoint a chair or vice chair, right? So maybe in this, our board, as it stands, maybe you invite, you know, chair or vice chair, take on more of a collaborative role. And I'm not saying who would be what, but like, if you were to, you know, he was the chair, you're the vice chair, vice versa, like you would be...
I have to disagree completely with that.
I'm not, you can. It's a, it's a...
Throw it out. But I, I think that the chairman runs the meetings and has certain duties. The vice chair is there, if you're not there, if the chairman isn't around, then the vice chairman takes over running the meeting. Because that's the essential role of the chair, is to run the meetings.
We've never had a vice chair that...
No, I don't think so.
I think I might have. I can't remember.
I can't remember having one. I mean, it wasn't official or...
I don't recall. It's just normally we sit, talk about a group, you know, Mike was assumed more of a role of making sure everybody got their opinions in, and then he would come to the decision with everybody's input.
Well, and also, I think getting all the stuff together that we had to work with, when we did have a meeting to make a decision about something, we got the packet from Angela this time, but actually Mike has put a lot of that together before.
But that should come from that, not from Mike. Because he absorbed things that weren't necessarily, he should have, but he did it because he liked doing it, so...
Probably true, but there are two members in select for here, but that's sort of part of how they assign the tasks to those people who are responsible, some guys.
Well, it's been a capacity issue.
Yes. And now we got three people in there, which we've never really had before.
Well, I mean, Cherry works two days a week.
Yeah.
You know, Angela works four days a week. You know, so it's almost not much more than one FTE there. And then Beth assists, so, I mean, the question is, does Beth have capacity? I don't, or interest?
I mean, it's not her mandate, though, is it?
No, yeah, or if, if...
If she wants it.
If that's a negotiation that this sort of group wants to have with a group that's also already majority...
Well, the thing that has to happen is we've got to nail down a process of how this is all done, because it's kind of, we've all become so accustomed that every time we come to a meeting, we have everything.
Elaine put it all together before.
Which was great, but now we probably have to delineate. Well, the first thing we're going to have to decide as a group is, how do we want this process to flow? The application comes in, where does it go? I know, but who's responsible for gathering these documents? Let me notify them about the warning and all that, and maybe just write it down as an unofficial procedure. In my world, I call them SOPs, procedures or policy. This is how we're going to do this process, and even maybe have a little checklist that whoever's going to do this keeps that with this type of thing, which helps organize it a little better. So if the chair is out or somebody else, they have that list that they can just say, okay, we have this, we have this, they have this, we're ready to go.
And generally speaking, I've probably done, applied for 30 building permits myself, maybe more. And, you know, it's pretty much the onus is on the person applying to provide seven copies or eight copies of whatever it is, and then, it used to be I had to notify the butters myself, but the town has taken that on, and I don't know what the shift was. But that's like a fair amount of work, too, making sure all...
Seems to me when we put together a package at one point, that the secretary would hand to an applicant, telling them what they needed to do, and not to keep it out in the open instead of a mystery.
Isn't, no, we had that, we came up with the... It exists.
That's the applicant's...
And it gets used.
I did.
You know, we haven't had an applicant in a long time that came in prepared. They come in knowing what they're supposed to have, unless something came out of left field somewhere. But for the most part, they come in knowing what they're supposed to have. They have the list of all applicable conditions, so that part of it has always been pretty smooth.
Well, Elaine was pretty good.
Yeah.
Because we knew quite a lot.
Angela's been, Angela's been stepping up.
She has.
And, and not perfect, nobody's perfect, but she's quick to pick up on an error and then it doesn't happen again. I have faith in Angela for that.
But who, back to your point, because that's where I'm clouding on. I always thought it was the applicant who had to show us they notified the butters.
It used to be that way, and then I think the last...
It used to be that way?
Five, 10 permits.
But we send letters out to all the butters, and they're supposed to go out, return receipt requested, certified mail. And the reason for that, although, you know, it costs a little money, is if something happens down the road and somebody is really unhappy with something they didn't see coming, and they were to hire a lawyer and say, I was never even notified that this was going to happen, Angela or whoever would pull out this piece of paper and say, oh, no, it went certified, and here's your signature and receive it. So that's important, but it does go out of the office, these, these...
So we're missing...
Butters.
We're missing that, that's...
Well, Angela didn't know, and when I went in and talked to them about that, Cherry said, oh, no, it doesn't have to go out certified. It's true, it doesn't have to. And she said, in Ludlow, they don't do that. But in Ludlow, they have a chemo, and certain things would have to go out to hundreds of the butters because of all the condominiums, so they chose not to do it. We're not quite on that scale. So we can do that, and it's just one less thing to worry about down the road.
That's where it needs to be codified in a checklist, so that we know it got done. But these...
Yeah, at least with the Fletchers, they're one of the butters. It's not like there's a team, but we should get that.
For this before April 1st, to make sure they don't...
Yeah, I think that was in the list of things to be done, but like you said, Cherry says, oh, we don't have to do that, this was one more thing, and I think they just decided this won't, I'm okay, we won't, but I'm sure that it will be done correctly. Hence...
Who's involved?
Something.
Well, I think for your reason, it has to be done, for that very reason. I know when I was doing it in Massachusetts, standing fair on the planning board was to, for anybody. And even on the STRs, we, when we're sending out a potential fine or some warning of not being registered, it's all certified.
Yep. When I built condos in Boston...
With a return receipt.
Did that, first thing I had to do.
Half of them.
I think it's 1,500 feet in Boston, I had to send out a letter to every single person around, which is fine.
But we've done all...
Notifying what my intent to build condos, so... Which is, it's, I think it's just courtesy to, it's more of, hey, we're going to do this. Yeah, initially, they'd come talk to us. So, 99% of the time, it's probably not going to go legal thing, but it's just, you don't want to start off the application with bad feelings right off the bat. But that probably should be, we definitely have to send the butters out. That's going to be one of the first things, whoever does it, is have to get these, these butters notified, and get Jim to sign this thing. That should come.
Okay, so we need to figure out how we're going to make this simple.
Are we voting on it?
Yeah.
It's the lower of the chair. Yeah, we are.
Do we need to...
Two questions, I guess. By hand or by secret or? I don't think that's necessary, but, and the other question, what if there's a tie?
Do we need a deliberative session?
Have to call the one of ours. Deliberative session?
We could do that. We could invite these two to...
Yeah.
They don't get the vote? Oh, we could get the vote.
They get the vote.
It's automatic.
What did you say?
Said we need a little deliberative session. Deliberative session.
The rest of us can have a conversation about how we feel this sort of work.
Yeah, I mean, we're good. Okay. And you could do it in front of us.
It's not going to hurt Mike.
You guys could negotiate something outside. I would just do a hand score, God's sake.
Make it easy on them.
Do you want to do a deliberative session?
Please, thank you.
So we decided to do a paper ballot.
I see that.
What are we going to use it for?
I want to plant flowers.
Are we voting for chair and vice chair?
Yeah.
There's a ballot. Let me get us some pens.
Just go into pain.
I'll give you a free sandwich. I'll give you a free sandwich.
He's fine, bud. If you give me gas, I'll do it.
Hold up for gas.
Free gas.
Cinnamon rolls.
Cinnamon rolls? We don't have those, that's a good idea.
We got cinnamon thing at some point.
At the store?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a cinnamon.
That was pretty good, I can't remember. It was complicated, I think it was like a cinnamon roll or something, maybe she did. A while ago.
You should tell her to call the store the night before, so I can, if she wants the New York Times or whatever.
Oh, she did, she went in the night before.
Did she?
I think, yeah, or she called.
Cause I can hold it.
She called to see if they would hold it.
There's two people, Tom and her, that hide us. So, and I always have to, it's the Times or the Wall Street Journal, I think it's the Times she likes.
Yeah, it's the Times, she's a big Wall Street Journal user.
It's not a big deal.
Yeah, she did call, but maybe a note didn't get passed on.
I didn't see it, and I'm usually opening in the morning, but it's not a big deal.
Okay, but yeah, she called.
You have my cell phone, I'll bring it, get a text to me.
When she's working in Northfield, she'll stop at the corner store with a paper, because we don't come this way, we go the other way. So it's kind of like, when she's not, she wants. Well, she's, she's bought it up there for years, before you even open, so, but, but you know, when she's not working, Sundays, she'd like to care for me. So, but she did call on Saturday.
Good. Oh, it's sad, she wants the Sunday one up.
The Sunday one, that's the one she wants.
I'll just put a tag on it.
I sort of put a thing about how much newspaper gets piled up, or just to be recycled, so, okay. So anyway, so here we go. Chair Rick, Vice Chair Bruce. Chair Rick, Vice Chair Bruce. Chair Bruce, Vice Chair, not a vote.
Not a vote.
Chair Bruce, Vice Chair Rick. I think C dash B means Chair U, I guess whoever did that one. Chair.
Rick.
Oh, I see, I didn't see it. That's another.
Chad Root.
Oblivion, that's what my eyesight's going. Chair, let's see, Bruce, Vice Chair Rick, Chair Bruce, Vice Chair Rick. So that's four, Bruce, two, Rick, three. Have you be vice chair, and one no vote, so.
You got it, done.
Okay, so that's done, now the question.
Chair and vice chair.
Yes.
So that's, that's how it, so there's off, so as far as secretary goes.
What I would like to do is, if, if I could make a suggestion, if nobody has objections, I can ask Elaine if she would.
Well, that's kind of where we were. We could sort of concluded that it didn't have to be one of us.
Yes.
But we didn't conclude who it had to be, we just, we just sort of thought.
We can rotate.
Yeah.
The secretary.
It's taking good minutes, so it needs to be somebody who understands the process of.
She does. I think it's, it's tough to pay attention to the meeting and what's going on.
And take minutes.
I don't think it's smart to have one of us doing that.
I agree.
But to bring in a different person solely as a secretary, makes sense to me.
Would they do the mailing if required, right, yeah? I think that. And pay them to do it.
And Elaine no longer works in the office, so.
She's familiar with the, she typed the whole thing, and she made changes.
If she's willing to do it.
Well, there's that, but I'll ask.
She may be.
I think Cherry did it once for us too.
Did she?
Yes, once or twice she did take me on.
Cherry's got a lot on her plate between working here and working at Ludlow and having a young family, so.
It's just, and we, don't forget, we have the recording, so whoever does take notes can always listen to the recording after the fact to feel what it likes.
Elaine's got plenty of experience with it, she knows how it starts.
Well, that would work out well.
That would.
So if she's willing, we can. You would ask.
So, is there any old business?
Not that I'm aware of. Just have one application for.
And is there any new business?
Next meeting?
Nope. And would somebody like to take a motion?
I do have one question, we did decide to meet at six, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the next meeting, I'll be working on the mountains, so I may be kind of looking like a ground rat off the mountain, but that's, I just wanted to make sure that it said it on the agenda, on the.
Is it Tuesday, April first?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll be fools together.
Is it for real?
They canceled April Fool's Day.
They did?
Yeah, things are crazy enough, the fools out there.
The world is full of them, so.
Cat's forty out there.
What time did we meet, seven?
Yeah, we used to be seven.
Remember, we made the motion to.
I like six.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to it, give it.
Second.
Done.